Are there folks from parks?
Yeah, there is.
Hello Stacy.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are three of us. Jillian can't come tonight, so... And then Barb is, you know, wears two hats tonight.
Double hat.
There's the two hats.
Do you have any cattle?
Excuse me?
Yeah, no, but I'm doing a CLA simultaneous broadcast instead of going into Portland, so... Which means I can sleep.
Welcome to keep that. I've got several of these in my bag.
Who generated this?
Which one?
The City Hall thing.
That's one of... So there's two sheets here. So one is from the mayor, which is the second one, and that top sheet's from the city manager.
So the top one is Bruce wrote?
Yeah. Bruce wrote the front one, and then I think that Sam's is that second.
And the concept criteria were Sam's?
Yeah, I think so. I got them off the internet and just pulled it from the internet. Yeah, I see my Sam's take on City Hall criteria. So he may have copied that from something Bruce did. The other parts from something Bruce. This is not my project, so I don't know.
I was holding that against you. I won't anymore.
So are they in different order? Because on the back, I mean, on the second sheet, on the back of the second sheet, then it's identified as Sam's.
Yeah, this is... I just printed this off from the stuff that's on there. This was not... I was not told to give you anything, but I said, "At least I'll give you this," because that's... There's a bunch. I mean, I could print off hundreds of pages if you wanted to. But this is just for you guys to decide amongst yourselves if one of you wants to be on that committee, you know, for the planning commission.
The city vision statement, who generated that?
You'll have to ask the city manager. That's for... This is from the city manager, not from me.
And is Bruce gone right now?
They're at the League of Cities, yeah.
Jeff, does your hope tonight that we'll pick someone to...
Yeah, yeah, a few guys could pick someone.
They asked us to pick someone?
They have asked. Did they get what? I was not... I was not told until today.
Because it's been known for how weeks?
I think an email was sent out to all of the different committees. We received it a couple of weeks ago.
I was not sending it.
And it was sent to parks and DRB. Did you get that?
They did send one, they just didn't give...
Would you like to take the heat for the City Hall? No, I made my decision that day.
Okay, let's get started here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor? Is there a motion to... I'm not really sure. These minutes from... There's minutes from July are in here. And I'm not really sure why they're in here. But, I mean, that's all that I got.
Yeah, that's all I saw in it as well.
Anyways, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Still move.
Is there a second?
A second.
So I'm getting a bit annoyed with Chairman Robert Johnson. Yeah, I mean, it's like, I've been vice chair, then I'm chair, and then I don't have the right name, and it's becoming irritating to me.
So I will withdraw my motion and restate it that we would like that corrected in the minutes.
Corrected, yeah. I'm in the... It's all minutes from...
And what was your... What is your name?
Okay. Okay, this is a work session for events, outdoor merchandising with the park committee. So I'll turn it over to you, Jeff.
All right, thanks. As I point out in the staff report, first off, tried to do a more clear way of putting it all in one place. Is this better, you guys, for reading purposes? Instead of multicolored and all that other stuff?
I think it's gonna take a staff of 23 to plan a minor event.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Let's put everything in that we can have, just in case we need something to, you know...
And you guys, you know, I do want, you know, to realize that I have worked with these before, and so, you know, I don't think it does take a staff of 23, but, you know, I just want you to know, this is not a... You know, it's not that overly complicated. And it's gonna place what's gonna be on the normal application and handle the major ones. And so, a normal minor one, an application can be written. It can be one page, front pages of documents. So that's really what this is about. I got some comments from Mr. Lundey, and are you wanting them to join us here at the works?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay. And so, he pointed out, which is something we... I think we had caught it the last edition, and it didn't get corrected in this one. But you might find, if you're a very close reader like Bob, that you'll see it 'oh four' in some crazy places. And that's because I did a find replace for the numbers 10, and it replaced it with an 'oh four.' And so, you know, that was my... Because I was doing the search for the actual code references. And so I've identified each, and I'll come across that when I go through it. But basically, what the special events ordinance, I take you back to this. And this is really the breakdown of how a work... The workflow happens. It starts with drafting this ordinance. It's under any special event, and that's really anything. It's over 50. I'll read it to you from the definitions. But, "Special event: Any organized formation, parade, procession, or assembly consisting of 50 or more persons, and which may include animals, vehicles, or any combination thereof, which is to assemble or travel in unison on any street which does not comply with normal or usual traffic regulations." And then it says, "Any commercial, non-commercial, organized assemblage of 50 or more persons at any public beach, public park, or a waterway, street, or sidewalk which is to get it for a common purpose under the direction or control." And then...
Jeff, could I... I'm sorry to stop you, but just for a minute. You're under the definitions right now, reading it?
Yeah.
And is that... I'm looking under event and not seeing anything like that. Where...
You see special event down there at the bottom?
Yep.
And so then, so then it's broken down into, of course, minor and major. But as any ordinance that's written in such a thing, you'll have your exceptions. Those are also listed in there. Demonstrations is your first kind of breakdown. Those are kind of separated out, and that's really because of, you know, law on demonstrations being allowed. And then that's special events, which then, really what the two barriers are, over 50 or you have to close a street. Okay? And so, a minor, over 50, under 200. And you fill out an application. I've broken them down into really kind of three categories. And I'm considering a possible fourth, because we've been getting quite a few requests since I've been here for filming, and a lot of jurisdictions will at least have some kind of rules on that. So outdoor sales events, weddings, festivals, rallies, et cetera, fall under number two. And then farmer's market, which has just been moved and really hasn't been too much modified. And then the majors then have all those things that handle staging, signage, utilities, and resources that will be required, including emergency support, and what are the public impacts on our streets, parks, and beaches. And then how they flow through for notification purposes and for decisions would flow through a special events committee. And you'll see that I've added what you guys had talked about last time, about the public being part of that. And then they would go to city manager currently for decisions, because, you know, we talked about possibly going to council, so we can talk further about that. And then the minor ones would just go through my approval. And then, of course, we talk about as the general portion of the ordinance, notification, fees and permits, conditions, appeals, the appeals procedures, then violations and relocations are that kind of thing. So, you know, fairly basic structure to the ordinance. And it's to try to do a few things. One of them, of course, is to do a little bit better job of... We do events now, but there's no standards to go by. So, for instance, they closed down, I guess, from my understanding, someone said, "Well, they closed down Whale Park to everyone this past weekend, and then we're selling on stuff or giving away things in there." You know, all those things are not allowed, you know, so...
Surprising.
Yeah, surprising but not allowed.
Paid event on the beach?
Yeah. So these things are happening. They've been happening. I hear complaints about them. I get, you know, but I say, "Well, we have nothing about that right now."
So back up, there was a paid event on the beach?
That was the way I read it, that there was something that was going on that you could get into if you had bought the $50 or whatever.
Yes, and the money went to nonprofits. Half of the money went to five nonprofits. The other... Rest of the money went to pay for the dance company that they brought in and all of the things that they had.
So they received a state...
A tax.
Right, but they received a state beach permit to... It was on the beach, so they would have had to go through the state parks for permit, which they did.
I see. Okay, so it wasn't in park, thank you.
Well, Whale Park was...
And under the changes, it wouldn't be allowed there?
Well, it would be allowed. You'd have to get a permit, though, right?
Not under the changes.
But it could be on the bandstand, and that would have been wonderful.
Yeah, it would have to be the bandstand, the way we've talked about it.
Oh, because the parks can't be used for a special event, right?
Well, you use it for a special event, but you can't reserve it for that.
That's right.
Take your chances a little bit.
Yeah, but not for more than 50 people. If you have more than 50 people, you're supposed to go to the bandstand. You can reserve the bandstand. It's the change we made to the... That we're recommending.
So let me just ask you this then. So if they were gonna do something like that, like what they did at Whale Park last weekend, where would they go?
Under the way that it's currently drafted?
No, under the future draft.
The draft, yeah.
Yeah, under the way that it's drafted, they wouldn't be allowed to do that.
At Whale Park, they would have to go...
Yeah, under a park.
They have to reserve the bandstand.
Yeah, they can go to a bandstand or find some other, you know, private facility or park. I mean, a parking lot or something that's privately owned, something like that.
So the dancing on the beach, they'd have to do with a state permit?
That's true, yeah.
Which they've always had to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, but they couldn't have a beer garden or whatever they had at the... At any park except the bandstand? And then they can't reserve it, so maybe no...
They can't reserve it.
Reserve, bandstand.
Okay, now you can reserve the bandstand.
That's the change that we are suggesting.
Which it hasn't been approved by the city council. Yeah, but we've been working on it for a long time through the parks committee.
So do I mind if I close that thing?
I mean, I, you know, work for the Park Bureau of Portland, and I find it a bit peculiar that you can't reserve a park. I mean, we had weddings, which you had to get a permit for, and of course you got... The Park Bureau got fees for that, but you revert... You reserve that space wherever you'd be in any park. So I kind of find it peculiar that you can't have an event in a park and reserve that space.
And the park committee's philosophy is that the parks should be available for everyone to use on a first-come, first-served basis?
Well, in the case of weddings in the Rose Garden, if you felt bold enough to walk through the wedding party, you could. But you reserve that space, either Shakespeare Garden or Amphitheater or whatever, but you reserve that, then it could also be in other public parks. But you, you know, then you have something that you're certain of in terms of places to have an event. So anyways, that's been my background with that.
I believe that Kirk said that in all of the years that he has been involved with the city and the parks, that he wasn't aware of there ever having been actually a conflict between somebody who was having an event and other people who wanted to use it. That they were always able to comfortably resolve it or just use different parts of the park.
But he also has reported issues with the use of Les Shirley Park for three-day weddings and those kinds of things. I mean, it's not like there hasn't been...
And that's why the parks code was even...
So, here's what I'm... I just guess I don't understand. So if you can use the bandstand, you can reserve the bandstand. Like, let's just say for this gallery group thing that they had last weekend, so they'd have to reserve the bandstand to do it. And is that, when you reserve the bandstand, you're reserving just the bandstand? How much of the park? How many square feet of the park is yours?
You'd have to ask the Parks Committee on that.
It's not defined. My feel of it was that it's like from here to that wall, something like, you know, right around the front of the bandstand.
And whatever... No, I thought it was whatever you'd need.
However, for...
Yeah, but I'm just curious, why that? Why is that better? I mean, there's soccer games in that park and all kinds of other activities that if you had an event there would interfere with the soccer game, for example. So whereas in Whale Park, it seems to be much less interference. In fact, there were a bunch of people who didn't have tickets who were sitting there enjoying the music.
Oh.
You know, because they had bands playing and people were sitting around enjoying the music. The only thing that your ticket got you was some hors d'oeuvres, I mean, basically, and a glass of beer. That's it, you know. So I'm just to understand what... Why? It seems arbitrary to me that it's okay for the bandstand, but it's not okay for Whale Park. I don't understand it.
My understanding of the decision was that if you're doing something in the bandstand, you have to make... You're gonna have lights and probably a sound system, and... If you have an event at the bandstand, you are more likely, especially if you have a musical event, you're more likely to have a large crowd of people. I have... I've been to a couple, not really many, music and dance things at the bandstand. And I... And I've seen people playing soccer there, but it was never clear to me whether there was... Would it have been a necessary conflict? It looks like it's a big enough park that you could play a game of soccer and have your goals...
It's big enough. It also has restroom facilities and parking, which the other ones, with the exception of Les Shirley, don't have. And Les Shirley's parking is limited. So if you're going to reserve a place and you want to make sure that it's reserved and nobody else is there, then don't use the park. You can come in early and put up chairs and, you know, things just like you would do for any other event where you couldn't reserve it. You can still use it with the understanding that other people have the right to use it as well.
So, but that's why I'm curious, because at Whale Park, that's exactly what happened. The gallery group used it, but all kinds of people, other people were there who were not for the gallery group event, just sitting around listening to the music and watching the dance performance on the beach. So I'm curious why that wouldn't be allowed?
Actually, maybe it would. I guess the only thing... I was maybe imposing this notion that because people could only get the hors d'oeuvres and the glass of beer if they had their ticket, that that made it something where they were selling something there. But I can easily imagine that somebody would... Either Jeff or Bruce would make an interpretation, "No, that's not really selling it there. They bought the tickets another time, da-da-da." And since there wasn't a conflict, we have a precedent that there wasn't a conflict that time. Another thing that occurred to me was, I don't remember where this went, but I think I brought up as far as soccer and something at the bandstand, that I don't play soccer and I don't have kids or grandkids that play soccer, but my impression is that there's a league that plays on a predictable schedule and presumably it would be easy enough for Jeff and Bruce to know what those times are and somebody comes in and wants to schedule something at that time and say, "Be aware, there's gonna be a soccer game going on there." They're gonna know that ahead of time. They presumably have the whole season scheduled ahead of time.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know what happens if somebody wants to go do a wedding at that time.
I think...
I mean, they're there first.
Just projecting being in your place, I would say, you can reserve it. I'm not gonna forbid you to, but be aware that there's gonna be a soccer game going on behind you.
Well, not if they've got there and they're having a wedding.
No? Won't both fit?
No, I'm saying, what if they're right in the middle of their soccer field, somebody wants a wedding there?
In the middle of the soccer field?
Yeah.
Then it's tough. They can't resolve, they can't reserve the middle of the soccer field.
I'm not saying reserve. I'm saying if I'm gonna have my wedding and I go set up there, and then, you know, it's at the same...
Oh, I see. And they've already set up before the soccer players get there.
Well, what's the deal?
Then the ruling would be whoever's there first.
Yeah, yeah.
But chances of a wedding on a Wednesday evening is pretty good.
Plus, if you had an event that only had four people,
Exactly, it's okay.
You could sit in the middle of the soccer field and see how it would go. That's one of the things that bothers me about this whole process, I think, I guess, of being an old anarchist. You know, when my buddies in Chicago decide that they're gonna have an event on Cannon Beach and just, "Hey, Cannon Beach'd be a nice place to be," and that goes out across the country to a large network of friends, relatives, fellow anarchists, or whatever. What are you gonna do about it? People show up, and they happen to be, there were six thousand of them.
Well, you're not gonna do anything with this. If you don't have this, you're not gonna do anything. But if you have this, you can do something.
What do you mean, if you have this?
If you have an ordinance in place.
My point is, it's not organized. I mean, this is all about organized activity. So people just showing up.
Isn't that what the Corals do?
Six thousand person flash mob.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I...
I think if it's on the beach, then it's a state issue. If they decide to have a flash mob in a city park.
The beach is gonna be in somebody's front yard, and, you know, and cars parked every which way. You know, and it'll be a romance. And when I read through this, you know, the first time I read through it, it came to me that, you know, this would be fun to screw around. You know, just out of my past history. And I read through it again yesterday and again today, and I had the same reaction. And that is, this seems like an enormous burden to put on people to read through, you know, a mind-numbing pile of definitions and, you know, do's and don'ts and so forth and so on. For some group that wants to have, you know, 50 people show up at an event somewhere, I think it's an enormous pile of verbiage to go through, and it gives lots and lots of power and theoretical control to law enforcement and city officials and so forth that ultimately probably won't ever be necessary except when somebody comes in and reads this and says, "Holy shit, what are these people doing?"
I wanna... I guess I don't understand. What, Jeff, what made this happen to begin with? What's been the problem?
Well, you just said about the Whale Park. Let's just start with that, okay? What happened at Whale Park?
It wasn't a problem.
It doesn't go with the very first thing that this was written on. "For the purpose of this section, the free distribution of merchandise is considered outdoor merchandise and is prohibited." The police should not allow that. I shouldn't allow that. The code enforcement officials shouldn't allow that.
What do you mean by merchandise?
If this is in a place.
No, no, that is... That's our... I'm saying, I'm just saying, there's a... If you're concerned about ordinances and, you know, the endless verbiage, Joe, you've got verbiage that's not being utilized now.
Oh, I know.
Then get rid of it, okay? That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I guess my point is...
You've been sitting here for... Working on a committee that's writing... I mean, if you're... I mean, I know you're an anarchist, but if you're part of this government and this committee, which you are, your job is to make sure that these are being utilized correctly, because they're not serving a purpose if they're not. You know, why are we have those? That's what I'm trying to say.
Why do we even... Why do we need one for 50 and under? I'm curious. At all?
No, it's only 50 and over.
I mean, why do we need the small...
If it's a minor special event, it's under 50.
Really?
The insurance company said you...
No, it's over 50.
So what about that Whale Park thing?
Minor 50 is...
They had to get insurance.
Over 50.
So they bought insurance, so...
They would have had to, I assume they did.
Yeah, so that they have to get in events. So what I'm trying to say, the whole reason you're doing this is we have... We do events right now, right? And we permit them supposedly, but there's no language that says we permit them. There's no ordinance or standards that tell them. So we're just doing it because we do it. That's not a defensible thing if someone has an accident or someone does have a problem.
Okay, so it's liability.
It's liabilities and risks that we're putting the city at. And so, that is really all I'm trying to do, Joe. I'm not trying to throw a bunch of stuff at you. If you wanna scale it down as much as possible and just correct, A, start at the very last thing on this whole thing and correct that outdoor merchandising, that's the first step. I'd be happy, A, with that, so I don't have to say, "Well, the city manager was helping out with this Whale Park thing the other day." And, well, that just doesn't... It conflicts with our own ordinance. You know, I want him to participate in these things. And I want to put on, if we're gonna do outdoor merchandising, let's just get it correct in our ordinances, do you know what I mean? Under what standards will we allow this? So that somebody doesn't come to me and say, "Well, you allowed it for him, and you don't allow it for me." So that somebody doesn't come to me and say, well, you allowed it for him and you don't allow it for me? That's what I get every day. And that's a lot of wasted, you're paying this highly-paid bureaucrat to do that. And, you know, don't, don't, I don't wanna waste my time doing that. I wanna work for you guys and the and the kind of government you wanna have. And that's what I'm trying to say. So it doesn't have to be this complicated. But, you know, honestly, it's not that complicated. You know, a person's gonna come in and get an application, and that should be a thirty-one-page thing that is easy for them to understand. I don't expect my mother to go read any ordinance, but I expect her to come in and fill out a permit to do what is gonna allow her to do that. So, you know.
No, that makes sense to me. I mean, I just, I didn't even, you know, you're right. The liability thing isn't a big issue.
But I do wanna start with Joe's. I mean, I think it's a perfect place to start. We should start every one of our discussions on whatever we do, A, because I don't wanna get fourteen months later, like the Fordoon, and then say, well, we forgot about the big question. The big question, do you wanna do one of these? And which, you know, what I tried to kinda guide.
I don't think anyone forgot about anything with the Fordoon.
Well, exactly.
I mean, that's not a good example.
Well, you know, what I'm saying is I don't, every every point, City Hall's another one. They formed another subcommittee to do the City Hall wedding. But it started as, well, we're gonna do a City Hall renovation. And they get down the line and then all of a sudden it loops back, so do we even wanna do this? And so I'm saying at the very beginning, do we even wanna do this?
Well, we were directed by City Council to look at.
Yeah. But but like like Fordoon, do we wanna do this? And that's that's the first question.
We're directed by City Council to look at the current ordinance to decide what we wanna do.
Yeah.
Make it better or get rid of it or what?
Right. But plus, it also came up last year at the beginning of our twelve days of Earth Day. They suddenly said, this is not a city event. We've been doing it for ten years. And, you know, they said, you can't do it. And then we, and that's when they started saying, we need to look at, we need to look at developing something.
You need a structure in place so everybody's on the same page and law enforcement has something to back up things. People tend to misbehave. And having a structure in place so that everyone knows what's going on, you know, at least everybody's starting on the same page and you work from that. And the Parks Committee thing is, parks are for everybody. You know, if somebody wants to reserve something, there's plenty of places, hotels and stuff that they can pay to. They, you know, if you want a free venue, then you take what is offered. And in this case, if it's fifty or over, you get a permit. It's a one-page thing. It says that you can use this space, but realize that you don't get it exclusively. And if that doesn't fit with their plans, then there's plenty of other things they can do. You know, this is free. So.
Is it free?
Yeah, yeah. They have to buy insurance if it's fifty or more.
Right, that's it.
But they're not paying for the space. They're not paying for a hall for a wedding.
Okay.
You know, or they can go to the beach, get a permit and, you know, so they have options.
Well, that makes sense.
But the city needs to be protected and everybody needs to know what the rules are.
And they need to be the same.
Yeah, for everybody.
And you don't want people just showing up roping off parts of various parks.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And the city also incurs expenses with events.
Yeah.
You know, that people aren't paying for, except for taxpayers. You know, so it just kinda makes sense to have that structure in place.
Thanks. That's a good explanation. I really wanted to know.
Well, I guess what I would like to see, this, everything about this is about the event being organized. And that has bothered me from the get-go, because events aren't all organized. There's this assumption that there's some person or some organization that is going to put this event on. I think that's a very limited view of how large crowds develop. And and it's a when you're you're sitting at a beach where you've got a Chamber of Commerce that is constantly grinding away the theme of come and check out the magic. You know, you're gonna get crowds and they're not gonna be organized. And I don't know, I don't know how to
And I don't, I don't think that this applies. They're they're, there's gotta be a bunch of people there. But they're not a group, and so I don't think this applies to them.
Not for one event.
Yeah, it's not an event, right?
You're not setting up tables for all these people to come and sit at and get beer.
Well, you might be.
Well, then you have ordinances to
Have a big family.
To address it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then somebody's organizing it.
Yeah, the corgis are organized even though it's not, you know, and they're talking to them about coming later so it doesn't interfere with things. I mean, it's it's loosely organized.
Isn't that a state permit, the corgis? Because they're on the beach, aren't they?
Yeah, but they're everywhere. I love to glorify some butts, but they're everywhere.
The corgis were not really, not really, really organized.
I think it's a Facebook thing.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce is advertising the corgi.
Yeah.
They probably would not admit to being organized, you said it there.
Because don't they just say, just meet us on the beach?
Because I think that, yeah, I think like even their parade and stuff's down there, right?
Well, I wanna, I wanna address this food cart, truck issue, which is on page eleven. Given the size of the city and especially the permanent residents that are here, and given the nature and the character of Cannon Beach.
Remind me where on page eleven that is.
Well, on page eleven, it would be under F.
You can see the line numbers over on the left also as a good way at reference point.
Twelve, thirteen on page eleven.
Good, thank you.
So anyway, given the size of the city and the and the character of Cannon Beach, and the nature and character of Cannon Beach, and the scarcity of parking, to me, I feel like there shouldn't be food carts or trucks.
You you know why that's there. Yeah, that is, was asked for by a owner of a restaurant for their own parking lot when it's, when they're not using it. So I mean, you know, it's like you said.
What I'm saying is, to me, it's out of character with our city. And if if it's on private property, that's a different story than if they're using a food cart on the street, which is what typically happens in Portland a lot of cases.
Yeah.
So
Well, our our current, what I'm saying is our current ordinance does not allow any food cart, period.
Except the farmer's market, right?
I mean, we we spent
Yeah, loosely.
I mean, we spent over six months with the farmer's market to allow the sale of flowers. And of course, there's this big hassle with selling anything outside of your permanent business. So, yeah, yeah, it was. So anyways, I'm I'm thinking that, you know, we're opening up that door. And I'm not really sure that it should be allowed. But if it's on, if it's on private property, that's a different story than, but
I would like, I I like food carts, but I'm gonna make an argument of what, some some pushback that I think you're gonna get if if in fact this goes forward. And that is, if I understand correctly, the the location in question is EB00, right? And it would be right next to the new Micoreson, relatively new Micoreson Mexican restaurant. And I can easily imagine them not, them coming in and saying, whoa, wait a minute.
They're already having issues.
Well, I mean, to me, what seems silly about this whole thing is, okay, if 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 they wanna sell sandwiches, they they have a place to sell sandwiches if they wanna do that. So to me, having this cart and food truck doesn't make any sense to me. It's like, okay, you wanna have more hours, just open up your your restaurant for more hours, for a different menu.
Because, and they're also taking away more parking, which, you know, by putting a food cart. So I I agree with you.
I don't think that's public parking.
No, I don't. But but people then are gonna have to park on the street to be able to go to their food cart on the two days that they're they're closed. So I'd say sell it out of their their restaurant.
Because most food carts are there because they don't have a restaurant. That's the only, that's their only
They wanna grow up.
It's the restaurant, it's the food cart. But these places are res, already a brick-and-mortar place.
Well, didn't the distillery want to be able to have food carts in their parking lot for events?
Yeah, the distillery has also mentioned, you know, that they'd like to do that as well.
But is, but can't can't you get a permit for an, if, let's say the distillery wanted to have a big event, they'd have to apply for a permit? And isn't there something in here that you can have a food cart for forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours or something?
Not in our current ordinance.
No, no, I mean, in the new one.
In the proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that's what we're talking about here.
Right. So I mean, you you don't think they should even have it for a special event?
Well, special event would be, would be a one-time event.
Right.
But in this case, to me, it's it's like, okay, we're gonna bring in this food cart, so we, but here you, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me that they can't do what you'd be selling out of a food cart in the restaurant.
No, I agree.
Well, like a distillery, they can't. They don't have the kitchen. They're not allowed to do that.
What's that?
The distillery can't do that. They don't have a kitchen. They're not approved.
This is the distillery location up the, up the block.
And and to, and the event is limited to the prescribed time period, which not to exceed seventy-two hours for no more than four occasions per year. So it's, you know, it's a limited time period.
How many, I'm sorry, we've
That's a pay, on page ten, number twenty-six, line twenty-six, I mean. That that gives you the parameters that this would, the food cart would operate under, the food truck would operate under.
For only seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
No more than four times a year.
Yeah. So I mean, if you wanted to have a big special event, let's say the distillery is moving, but let's say they wanted to have a a big event so they could sell hot dogs to go with their whiskey. Sorry, 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 sorry. They could, but they could only do it for the, for that special event, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, if it's
They couldn't set up a hot dog stand all the summer long.
Yeah, I mean, if if it's, if it's, you know, four events a year, I mean, that's that's limiting that. But still, in the in the case of Evo, it's, to me, it's, it's like, it doesn't make any
Well, they just wanna do it just for their special event.
Almost to that same point, if if they wanted to have something at the distillery, it seems like they could work out something in the screw-in booth to to cater it half a block away.
Well, no.
Or on the other, on the other side of it.
You don't wanna run back and forth with your hot dog and whiskey.
Can't take the whiskey on the streets, so.
Yeah.
So I I would like to bring something up on page twenty. We could put it someplace else, but that down around like lines twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty, you said, page twenty?
What page?
Page twenty. And I'll give you about a minute or less of background on this.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, line twenty-eight, you said, line twenty-eight?
Round, round line twenty-eight.
Okay.
For for years now, when I've scheduled community groups to come to the farmer's market, a few of them have sold things out of their booths, and it hasn't really been an issue because they're, they generally only come twice a season anyway. So it just, they, under the present law, they can, they can do that. However, a lot of the time, there are, we have an empty booth available that somebody could come in. And as it gets later in the season, I say, okay, even if you've come a couple of times, go ahead and sign up and you can fill in. I I can only think of a couple of groups that sold stuff, excuse me. Friends of Haystack Rock sell sweatshirts and tote bags and maybe some other things. And historically, the library has sold chances on a quilt, although I think they only came one time this year. And but just so that I wasn't, so I knew where I was going. And I didn't have to say, but you can't come and sell anything. I have been, I haven't been telling the groups, no, you can't, if you come a third time, you can't sell anything. But I went to Bruce late this season and I said, am I okay doing this? Should I just not say anything and nobody else is gonna say anything? And he said, I should just change the ordinance. So I I looked for, not here, item six on line twenty-seven. One way to change that would be the sale of goods and services by a nonprofit organization is either subject to chapter blah, 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 or at the farmer's market. These are exceptions to to selling stuff. And I, I would like to find find some place to to make that change that says that farmer, a nonprofit group selling at their booth at the farmer's market isn't limited to two times a year.
It's an exemption.
It's an exemption.
So so are you saying that you're just wanting
A special, a special pleading.
An exemption for any nonprofit organization to sell goods and services anywhere?
No, at the farmer's market.
Only at the farmer's market.
That's what I said. You just would add that, the sale of goods and services by a nonprofit organization at the farmer's market.
Yeah, where you're saying subject, subject to or at the farmer's market.
Either subject, I, so four, four oh one, one thirty is three pages, and I'm I'm sharing.
But you're you're limiting that to three months. The farmer's market
Sixteen, sixteen days a year, yeah.
So that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I mean, we we can go back to what we've always been doing, which is not just ignoring the fact that there might be somebody selling for a third time.
But that that provision of chapter four, one thirty is is anything tied up with a minor, which the farmer's market does, right? So if a nonprofit is selling their goods and services at a, at a minor, then I think it already exempts it, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Didn't Bruce
I I guess I was looking at and said, if I were, okay, so
You know, I'm saying, subject, we can clarify that, make, you know, even make it clear, if you might. That's, that's how I read that.
Good. Thank you.
And but but it but it doesn't prohibit it also from, you know, them selling it in other nonprofits also doing it in another
At other minor events.
Like, you know, like what we did with the Whale Park. That that falls under that that ordinance, so, you know, the one thirty, so that people can do that kinda thing.
How was that a nonprofit?
I'm just saying, if it was a nonprofit.
Well, as long as it was Cannon Beach Gallery Group, they're a nonprofit.
Yeah, yeah, they were.
Oh, and and it was kind of the gallery group that got the the other half of the money? Oh, okay.
And they wrote, and they got the grant from TAP, the Cannon Beach Gallery Group.
Okay. I just think of it as a as a business promotion. I just think of it as a, as a business promotion.
Aren't they, aren't they a non, aren't they-
They are.
They wouldn't be able to get-
Yeah, right, they couldn't get the grant from TAC if they were a nonprofit.
Ben, thank you for pointing out that that's a moot point, and I, and I apologize for wasting your time on it, and mine.
So, could we, um, go back to page three there at that, where I inserted the red language from the last, just to see which you guys thinks works better there, you know, I put for the parks, uh, "Special events proposed by, and city parks hold no guarantees since all Cannon Beach City Parks operate on a first-come-first-served basis," and then I put, "Or, no person shall engage interconnect, special events are not permitted in city parks," you know, which, which do you like better? Is that kind of more language on that or not?
I think that the first one reflects what, what the Parks Committee arrived at.
Okay, I thought that you couldn't have a special event in the, any city park except the bandstand.
You can't reserve space except at the bandstand, you can have a, you can have an event with a bunch of people, you just can't reserve-
Oh, okay.
You, you may be surprised, if there's another, somebody else is having a family reunion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, so you can get a permit to have a special event in Whale Park?
Yes.
No.
I thought you couldn't.
No.
Why not?
Because I thought the only one that you could do that with is the bandstand.
You can reserve-
That, that was my understanding, is that you could res- you can do a special, you can get a special events permit for it, but nothing guarantees you're gonna be able to do that.
You may find somebody else's, well, let's see, but the city would not, would not-
That's weird.
Would not issue two special event permits for the same place at the same time, so at least you wouldn't have another fifty-person family reunion.
But what I'm saying is, you could show up and somebody could be holding a wedding there, is what I'm saying, and that's, you know. That was, that was a city manager's issue, if you, you remember that?
Yeah.
Right, but what I heard, somebody here say, is that the only place you could have a special event was at the bandstand.
Reserve.
No, just have one.
E- either one of us misspoke or you misheard.
I misheard, I guess, because you're saying, so Whale Park, did they reserve that? Did they reserve Whale Park for that special event last summer?
Remember that this is proposed law.
Yeah, and there's nothing, so it would be under the current ordinance.
All right, all right, that's true. So, in the future, if the gallery group wanted to set up their thing in Whale Park, they could do it, if they were the first people there.
They just couldn't reserve it, yeah.
That seems odd to me.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
It makes no sense at all.
That's making sense to me.
It makes no sense. Because you're just ending up with the same result, except the only difference is, you might have one group disappointed and messed up because they, you know, they showed up and someone else was using it, but you still have a special event going on in the park that other people are in the public, it makes no sense if you do, if you interpret it that way. Why would you do that?
Well, where are the people from, you know, Hell's Angels, you know?
Why do you have to come out?
Well, where do the Hell's Angels show up?
Not without a permit.
Well, well, permit needed, who's come first served?
Only if there's over fifty of them.
There probably would be.
That's why I said it.
So, if you have a wedding with forty-five people-
Then you don't have to get a permit.
You don't need a permit, you can go into any park you want and have your wedding.
I understand that that's true now.
But over fifty, that's where it triggers.
But if you have over fifty, you have to have a permit, but you still can go into any park and have your wedding.
I think the over fifty comes from the insurance company.
Right, okay, but then you still can go into any park and have your wedding with a permit.
Understanding that if you go to that park and there's a soccer game going on-
No law, come around.
Right. Because it's first come, first served. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it doesn't preserve the parks anymore for the public than, than the other way?
Yeah, that-
I mean, it, there's no di- in other words, the result is the same, except that if you have over fifty, you have a permit, and you might end up in conflict with the group that's already there.
Yeah.
How is that better?
It's not better, but it's not worse.
The permit, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I don't understand.
Having the permit makes sense to me because of insurance, but I'm saying, why can you only reserve the bandstand and not reserve the other parks? What are you gaining that way?
I think you're protecting the public's right to use it.
Yeah.
Except that, if, the same group can get a permit and go in there and have their wedding in any park, it just, they can't reserve it, but they can have it.
I look at it as a mechanism to control larger groups.
Yeah.
And to protect it from an insurance standpoint, really.
Yeah.
It's, it's not practically gonna make a whole lot of sense, but it does give the city some tools to work with larger groups.
Okay.
And there's impacts to city staff when you have, you know, just a large group of people.
No, but you're still having the group.
Right.
With a permit, you still have the group, they have a permit, but they don't get to reserve the space.
Right.
So, there's less control.
Right.
Huh?
The city can schedule it.
Well, and there's also-
In only one park, they can't schedule it in any other park, that's what they're saying. In other words, if I wanted to have a wedding of, of over fifty people, I could get a permit, and I, but I can't reserve the park, I could just go in there with my wedding party, set it all up, and hope that I'm the first one there. The result is, I'm still having a wedding-
Make sure your wedding party is only forty-five people, and, and, and all the other guests can show up if they want.
But when they, when they fill out the permit, there's expectations that are presented, that you're gonna clean up after yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that, so that part is-
No, I think that, I think the permit's fine, I, the only part I'm not getting is the reservation part.
Yeah.
Why you can't reserve, if you're go- if the end result is you're having, you're taking over a park with your event,
Yeah.
one way or the other, with a reservation or not, you're, the only difference is that with one thing, you might have a conflict between two groups, and with the other, you wouldn't.
I can, I can say that, you know, it, I totally agree, Lisa, this is, to me, the, this is our, our big question, uh, because the, the city manager's already con- stated his concern about that, and I know the council's kinda iffy about that as well, but I do think that if we present them with an ordinance stating, uh, you know, kind of the guidelines, and you guys then make, you know, after we get to the draft stage of this and you guys are reading it, you can, you make that decision on whether, you know, there should be, um-
The ability to reserve, if you're gonna reserve-
Certain areas or whatever.
If you're allowed to have a party there.
Because they're, that's gonna come down to their decision, because I, I mean, from my understanding, from just even when they brought it to us, was that the city manager wasn't comfortable with having the two conflicting.
So, if I wanna reserve the bandstand, is it gonna cost me anything to reserve it? See, that's, that's what doesn't make any sense to me, is there should be a fee, why are you making a buck off of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we made three hundred dollars off of that.
No, that's what, I mean, every intention, uh, I know that, uh, any other jurisdictions that ever done, uh, one of these, yes. I mean, we're picking up their trash, we're setting up, uh, things, so, yes, there's gonna be a fees attached to these, uh, events.
I used to rent a house for a couple of weeks, right across the street from Les Shirley Park. And for the most part, during the summer, at least during the weeks that I rented the house, there were all kinds of groups that would number fifty to two hundred people, who were having, you know, gatherings that seemed to go on forever, and, and, you know, overran the, overran the park. And somehow they managed to settle the process, I mean, if you had a big enough group, I suppose you could protect your territory, but, yeah, I, I just don't, I don't think that the city is in a very good position, or their insurance company is in very good position to, uh, have a whole lot of control, and you may be able to hand something to a cop and say, "Now, here's your justification for busting this thing up," but I, I don't know if I'd wanna be that lonely cop trying to do it, especially if it's gotten a little alcohol going as well.
If you're not doing anything about it-
Yeah, it's-
And something happens.
City's fine?
No, the ability kicks in. I, I think the world is just such a, you know, everybody's looking to point their finger at somebody else, and what we did when we were kids has changed so much.
I think having this ordinance is a good idea, the part that bothers me is just about the reserve not reserved, because I think that's-
It's highly imperfect, but you know, it just doesn't-
But that can be fixed, I'm just saying that the idea of having a, a permit for over, for fifty and over makes sense to me.
I look, you know, we were talking about the bandstand, and I was thinking about the bandstand versus some of the other parks, the bandstand stands seems like a, the user of that space is going, it's a specific space. Yes, you could argue kids are gonna ride their tricones or something, but generally, it's going to be some sort of performance-oriented space.
Yeah, yeah, it's a performance.
And so, for me, saying, "Okay, this space, you have the right to reserve," makes sense, if, if we're gonna try to find a sense in that.
And so, you know, maybe one of the, um, what might shake out of this is that we do just prescribe that one space, you know, so that, like you said, "Well, how far is it?" And you said, "Well, it's from here to there," you know, maybe it is just four stakes-
Or maybe twice, maybe the size of this room.
You know, in the ground saying, "You're reserving that area, when you reserve the stage, you get to have that much space," and that's it, you know, so, at least we have a kind of a, a starting point of where, where they could do, you know, that, like you said, the performance is, uh, is what you're, you're wanting to put on, so.
So, then you have one area where that can be reserved, and then the, the other side of me goes, "Well, you know, I'm, I'm the public, and I come in, and and someone's reserved off Les Shirley, I'm really mad, so, hey, that's my park too, I'm not, that doesn't fit."
Yeah, yeah.
So, maybe that's the way to balance it, is give them the option to have reservation, but just go with these other parks, this is for the greater good, and we're not gonna-
Play, if they were, if you came into Les Shirley, and there was a group having a wedding there, and, and they had a permit, but it wasn't reserved, they just got there first, it's the same result, you'd be walking into Les Shirley, it'd be taken over by a wedding.
But that'd be okay, because they beat me to it.
Yeah, well-
So, if you want it, go early, that's what they said in the permit so far, like-
I think if you give people the notice, sorry, go ahead. I think if you give people the notice, when they're giving that permit, "Hey, there are certain areas, we are not gonna give you any better than first come, first served," they're unnoticed that, you know, it may work out, it may not, but I just feel like we've got to-
I mean, we just had a pig roast on the beach, and they had to get the parks pregnant, but that was like four hundred dollars.
Right there.
So, it's like, why, I mean, to me, that's, I'm used to like, "Okay, you're having a wedding, and it's gonna cost you three hundred dollars, and, but you have this space," and yes, somebody could wander through, but most of the people that are having that wedding are gonna say, "Yeah."
You have to pay for something at the church hall.
Yeah, yeah.
What if you had line twenty-five and twenty-six, but you put, "Special events are not permitted in city parks," with the exception of City Park? You know, that there is one place where you can have a permitted event, where you are reserving a certain space for your particular time.
I can easily put, uh, "Special events approved in, uh, no, since all, first come, first served," I can put all of this, you know, and I can put exhibit, as Exhibit A, you know, and then show that on a map, what's prescribed area that they-
No, you're saying, take the second option, no special events in city parks.
Yeah.
Except for the, so that, that makes more sense to me.
That takes away the ambiguity of-
Right.
What you're discussing.
You could get the Sharks and the Jets in there, and they could have a big old fight about this.
There you go.
I mean, my, my feeling is, with the facilities that you have at Les Shirley and at City Park, that that should, both of those locations make sense to have a permit and a fee, and a space that's, that you're guaranteed. And in our case, in the, like with the weddings, there, we would have three weddings a day in the Gold, in the, in the Shakespearean garden, but the events had to be two hours apart from one another.
Yeah, yeah.
But then you have special people that are cleaning up between them, and you're charging them, we're giving people the opportunity to have an event for free. If they can't abide by our rules, then pay for it somewhere else.
That's what I've been saying all along, it doesn't make any sense to me, should you, you, if you're gonna reserve a space, you pay for that. This idea of not having a fee doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, and I think that that's really the, that's exactly the, the point, and that's, like you said, that's the, the planning commission can make the recommendation with your all's input on what, you know, you recommend for the city council to do on that point, but then let the city council decide, you know.
Maybe you ought to have a deposit as well.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what does that fee cover?
I mean, when you come in to get a permit from you, it's four hundred dollars, so it's sort of like-
Oh, yeah.
This, this idea of not, uh, having a, a permit and not charging doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, you know, 'cause I, when I worked in St. Mary's, Georgia, exactly, their, their waterfront park, you know, they, they had three different venues for weddings, and they were constantly used and reserved, you know, years in advance, and there's, all over the south is like that, and they make good money off of that, but I'm not saying that we have to turn all of our parks into that, but if you, they are going to, if they're going to have some expectations of that space, like a performance space where the band's gonna come in and play, you know, that we should charge a fee for that enough to at least recoup the, the risk and the recovery of returning back to where it was, so.
I have no problem with charging a fee, what, what do you guys think?
I feel like I'm still a relative newcomer on the Parks Committee, so I would wanna hear the, uh, opinion of other members, but, but what I'm getting is that there has been a longstanding philosophy about Canada Beach parks, that they are available to residents and to visitors to show up, and that you're not gonna get, uh, kind of the same feelings was established with the beach bill, as far as the beach was concerned, that, that somebody can't partition it off and, and say, "No, I paid for this, you can't, you can't use it."
What about like Tolavana Arts when they hold a, a concert in the, on the bandstand?
Anybody can come and listen.
Right, but what if you, you're there and you don't wanna, you don't wanna listen to it, you wanna be in the, just sit around the park and read?
Go to the other end of the park.
Well, no, I'm just saying, is, is I don't, if, if you're allowed to come in and, and set up a sound system and hold a, a concert, why shouldn't the city get money for that?
Because it's a public park, and-
And it's a, and it's a public concert, the concerts that they put on are a free public concert.
The Park Bureau in Portland was a public park, but we still had a fee, and we still had a, a space that, that they rented.
I think I would agree with the damage, I mean, deposit for damage, but I-
What about for police, too, what if you have a hundred people there? And the public restrooms are getting used and-
Well, we also have to think about our city staff, are we gonna turn into a, a rental agency? I mean, who's gonna-
Sort of what's happened with Old Town.
Except, except for free.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, this is a-
It's just the one park, so I can't see it becoming, you know, I mean, if it was just the bandstand, because that's wired for sound-
Yeah.
That makes sense, but I don't see, see why, unless you're a nonprofit, why you should be able to use it-
Yeah.
For free.
Well, I, I agree with the nonprofit, I really hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
That we could make it available to nonprofits, I mean, the Tolavana Arts Council is a nonprofit, yeah. And they're a city.
Yeah, they are a group, right, so that makes sense, that nonprofits can use it for free, or, or if North Coast Land Conservancy wanted to come in and put on a concert, you know, with, you know, um, force songs or something, you know, they could do that for free.
Yeah.
But a commercial, a commercial activity.
But if, yeah, some private group wants to come in and have heavy metal- But if, yeah, some private group wants to come in and have heavy metal on.
Show me the way.
Joe is, uh, Hells Angels, the five oh one C three.
All right. I'm going to make the papers.
We have a paper.
Yeah, if we.
You're free to say what you want.
Well, I think that, you know, I do think that we, in fact, the last place I worked. They, if it was a five oh one C three, they, it was exempt, so I'll put that also as an exemption under the fees category.
But I can see that the feeling seems to be that the only park that should be a special events park is the bandstand. So that you don't have special events taking over the town's. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, unless Shirley does have the facilities, but it's also.
But those facilities are nice for people having a picnic too.
It's how you get to the beach, it's how you, you know, it's a completely different type of park. And there aren't that many parks here and the majority of them are very small.
Right, I agree.
You know, you save it for the people.
And if someone wants a special event, they can rent that place over by the police station or they, whatever it's called, or the gardens. They can have their wedding there, they can pay.
There's places, you know, plenty of that, it's the fact that you, if you're not paying for it. Don't, don't have expectations, as long as you are aware that your reservation is not. Giving you total access.
To the entire park. If you haven't heard of Ellen out there during your wedding, tough.
They'll just kind of go wherever they want.
Well, does anyone else have other revisions or major revisions they'd like to see and, you know. Bob gave them some great, you know, incorporate.
To be expected any of this survives. Control, I, I, maybe you don't need this, but I noticed that you used the word, the phrase control plan requires a control. Sorry, page two, line eight and line eleven. Is referenced to a control plan.
Traffic control.
Traffic control plan, yeah, yeah.
Plan, is that something through the police department or does that need to be fined so it's not the back of the napkin?
That's going to be, yeah, so what we would do is likely, other places I've worked, you would just have a. Line drawn of your street network and then they would write on there what roads they want to, you know, cordon it off or whatever.
Page three, lines, I used to say nineteen to twenty-six, and specifically line twenty-four, you have an or in there.
Yeah, I put that because I didn't know, you know, the two different versions, so line twenty through twenty-three or twenty-five through twenty-six. And I think it's decided tonight to go with the twenty-five through twenty-six with an exception of.
For nonprofits.
Exhibit A type thing.
But then since we're revising, I'm talking now as a Parks Committee member, it's going to have to go back to Parks before it goes to City Council.
But this isn't ready to go to City Council.
No, yeah, yeah.
But our Parks Code is, and that's going to, that's going to be, I mean, we're going to City Council.
Next week.
Next week.
But what's, what's the difference between the Parks Code or, you know.
Well, we have to talk about.
There's nothing about fees.
Yeah, there's nothing in there about fees.
Yeah, well, there's, there's really not going to be anything when this goes to the Planning Commission, really. I mean, it'll have major fees, minor fees, it's not going to explain what those fees are or describe them.
So they can be changed.
Yeah, that's the councils to do that, so. So, yeah, and when we go, if, say, you guys decide on do these amendments, I'm going to. So the next one would be to take it to the Planning Commission.
Bring it back here.
If you want another work session, but it would, I would say I just give you a draft for approval for Planning Commission. Because you can make amendments as, as we go through, yeah.
And so under the fees section, you're not going to go into, you know, on page seven, four oh one oh seven oh. Where it talks about major event fee, minor event fee, third party fee, all that stuff. That's just sort of not, we haven't made a decision yet about that.
And, and all we would do is, all I'm going to do is put in that about the nonprofit exemption in there. But other than that, you get, when I go, when I draft this for the Planning Commission, we'll leave it pretty much at this level. Because that fee schedule is something that then the city council, they can, they can make the decision whether they want to put some fees in here. Or like a lot of jurisdictions, we'll just have a yearly fee schedule they adopt, and that's the fee schedule for that.
Like for a parade and covering the police and all the stuff that's associated with it, right.
On page eight, under insurance requirements, we've talked a couple times tonight about this. Partially being driven by the need for the city to have some tools around insurance. Has this language been checked against the requirement for the city?
It hasn't been vetted yet, no, that's in fact, you know, like I said, when it goes to City Council. The, the fees and the insurance stuff, that's going to go before the city attorney, before we can.
Sometimes that insurance, I didn't see any bonding in here, sometimes insurance would require that, I don't know if that applies or not.
And I would think, Clay, that it's just going to be pretty much their. You know, what they have in their other sections in their ordinances, but.
I've mentioned this before, we kind of just talked about it briefly though, but on page ten, line twenty-four. Subsection eight, the event has the written approval of the owner or lessee of the property which is to take place. Sometimes the rights of the lessee are not the same as the rights of the owner. And sometimes you might step into a spot where the lessee thinks they have the right to have an event on their site. And the owner says, no way in heck would I allow that.
Yeah.
I would put an and in there.
Yeah, that's a good point, okay.
And lessee if any.
I'm talking while you're on. On page fifteen, violations, lines eleven and twelve. The fine and the jail term do not seem in line with one another.
Yeah, and, and that, that's.
Ain't it the truth?
And that's also something that I'll, actually, it'll just default to our. Or we have a set fee for most of our ordinance violations, but that's, that's a good point, thanks for that.
Why, why I don't understand, why doesn't that?
Well. For a thousand bucks, you can get out of jail for six months. For, it seems, six months, I guess, put it another way, six months seems like a long time. For any kind of violation or anything.
I think that's a standard misdemeanor punishment.
Really?
A thousand dollars or six months?
Yeah.
Well, from my un, which I don't know much about misdemeanors. Happily, I haven't tested that, you know, I'm going to hire a lawyer. But I, maybe just look at it.
Yeah, I'll look at that, I'll verify that with our current.
Up to six, I mean, you know, no, if it's really egregious, you can get. Six months in prison, if you're just getting a slap on the wrist, you get a $250 fine.
If it's really egregious, you're charging 10,000 too.
It's only a thousand though.
Right.
Because it's a misdemeanor.
And misdemeanors cap at a thousand?
Usually they do, I mean, every jurisdiction is different, I don't know about Clousep County.
I don't know, yeah.
I know that in King County, it was a thousand.
Was it?
And a year in jail. Not six months, so that's a misdemeanor now.
Well, maybe the guy's.
Hells Angels will know.
So on page fifteen, there's a paragraph here about. I guess signage and what kind of instruments of destruction you can attach to signage. And as I read through the physical requirements of this. It struck me that you could stick your sign on a pretty short sword. And it would, the sword would, you know, constitute potentially a perfectly legal device.
Where are you?
On page, on number four, violations.
Line twenty, on page fifteen.
Twenty?
Line twenty.
It goes through and describes what would be inappropriate size. And I think, oh, well, you know, there's a damn short sword that could be.
Yeah, I will share something with you. Several years ago, I had heard or read from somebody that it is legal to have a switchblade in Oregon. And I asked Jason about this, and he said, you can carry any kind of knife you want to in Oregon as long as it's not concealed. And say, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't need to have it as part of what you were carrying with the sign. You could just, you could have it in a sheath on your, on your leg.
Well, all I'm saying is that as soon as you get down to this level, granular level of physical dimensions.
Yep, I thought it was kind of goofy too, and I did, I did put a parenthetical or a. A note in the margin of, how about soft plastic in addition to cloth and.
With balloons or something.
Well, the one thing that we always worried about in parks is driving stakes into the ground because of the irrigation system. So that was, that was something we forbid. It had to be weighted down, but not anything driven into the ground.
Then this was about carrying signs, so I was envisioning carrying signs in the parade, for example, was.
With your switchblade?
No, no, but, but, might have been, might have been something other than an allowed material. Something other than cloth, paper, or cardboard.
Too handed, yeah.
Plastic probably isn't going to hurt somebody, isn't this more for. I think of Antifa or something, you know, I mean, it's, it's to prevent having signs that are weapons.
It's basically what's, what's involved there, but all I'm saying is. I, I would be more interested in having a generalized expression rather than, you know, granular physical dimensions of.
It's easier, but it's not for law enforcement.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I. You give me the physical descriptions and I can provide a weapon that law enforcement would not be pleased with.
Yeah. Well, you, would you, Joe, would you want me just to put, you know, no weapons? What are you, what do you want?
Nothing dangerous.
Don't carry your swag on a weapon.
Well, what I'm saying is, you've got language there that basically talks about. The physical dimensions of the things that you don't want. Maybe it would be better just to. Talk about not being allowed to carry signs, posters, plaques, et cetera, attached to material that could be dangerous. And make it a little vague, instead of telling me what the dimensions are, so I have a way of writing myself out of them. You know, being sent to jail for.
Do you think the police chief would have any idea?
Yeah, I can, I'll run it by him, if he's comfortable with this or more vague language, I'll run it by Jason.
Good to do what he wants.
Does the city have any telephone booths?
Yes, actually, there is one right outside the police station.
Oh, that's right.
I didn't think about that.
That's right.
And it's the one still down to Surf Chris.
Uh, page twenty, line thirty-nine. Okay, well, there's telephone booths.
I only know that because I took a tour of City Hall.
That's right, I did too, and I forgot about that.
It faded off. Anything else you guys that I should look at?
Page twenty. We have an exception here for Christmas tree lot sales.
I think we always have that.
Yeah, sure, that's true, but it occurred to me that, you know, you might allow other religious groups. Into the, into the commercial end of all of this. And, you know, and you could have, you know, that more generally religious sale.
You want to draft that?
Yeah, how would you, yeah, I guess what I'm, you know, I agree, but I just. I've worked in many jurisdictions where they do have those seasonal Christmas tree sales lots. They come in and they do it in an empty parking lot or whatever for. Boy Scouts or whatever jurisdiction you're in, but I've not had somebody wants to come in and sell Buddhas or. You know, I mean, I don't, I just don't have that, I mean, in a lot.
What if you said cut tree sales lot?
Any what?
You could just call it a cut tree sales lot.
Instead of Christmas?
Holiday Christmas.
So.
Holiday tree sales lot.
So, yeah, holidays, I like that.
The schools can't say.
Why don't you just say holiday sale to the holiday tree?
Because then people start selling candy and.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm, what we're worried about is the flea market that just comes in and says, hey, this is the holiday.
Holiday ornaments, Christmas ornaments, yeah.
What's his name of, of flea markets? I just, I just think that just sort of pops out, it's, you know, part of it.
Yeah, I think it would be better to say holiday.
Celebration of church and state.
Okay, anything else, Joe? Well, I'll, I'll bring this back as a draft before you guys, if you all are ready for the Planning Commission, for the Planning Mission.
Thanks for all the work on this, it's a lot of work.
Thank you all, and the other thing, you know, I had mentioned before that the city manager and mayor's asked. Or the council's asked for someone as a vetting committee. For the city hall.
I just want to go on the record saying, this really bothers me. There is, there's zero provenance for this. I mean, okay, you have a city vision statement, who wrote it? I mean, I can't, I don't understand how you can have a police station goal statement without any kind of notification on. Where did this come from? You know, that, that's kind of a turnoff, you know, that we don't know where this stuff was generated.
And I was kidding, when I saw that email about this, about needing, wanting someone, you know, to serve on this vetting committee. And the explanation was to make sure that, that the vision statement.
Is lived up to?
Well, to me, there, there should be public input before any of this is written up.
Yeah.
It's, it's like, it's like city managers are pulling this together and not notifying the public of this. And there should be public input before this is put together as a vision statement.
Who's vision this is?
The city vision, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that I object to anything particular in it at all, I just. You just should have, at least just have, you know, at the bottom of it, where it was generated, because.
Well, and also, to me, there should, I mean, if you're going to put this together, there should have been, there should be public input. And there should be an announcement of.
Maybe there was at some time, maybe this is an old one that was, that did have, that's all I want to know, is where it came from.
Yeah, weren't there some meetings about the city hall and.
But there hasn't been any chance for the public to give in, like, so this committee is going to. My understanding, this committee is going to go through just the process.
Vet the materials that were, yeah, the proposals of the different sites that had all the information that they had.
Right, and then after that, or maybe concurrently, they're going to have some public, finally have some public hearing.
So if there was somebody from the Planning Commission, were you interested in?
No, because I've already asked specifically to be on the short-term rental committee, or committee, the public committee.
But I do know, Lisa, that this is only supposedly like four or five. But I do know, Lisa, that this is only supposedly like four or five meetings in a very quick succession, so...
Yeah, like twenty-four hours of meetings or something.
Yeah, it's very, and I think they have to do it by a certain date. So if you're, if anyone is interested, they, you know, it's not something, in other words, like the short-term rental, which, you know, is open, which will be announced the next meeting, that likely won't even, I'd say maybe have one meeting during this whole time period that this is done.
Oh, I don't think so, I think it's gonna have a lot more meetings.
For which one?
The short-term rental.
Yeah, but it's only quarterly, they're only quarterly meetings over a five-year period, four-year period.
Yeah, but I don't wanna jeopard, I want on that committee and I don't wanna jeopardize my...
Oh, you can't be on...
I don't think that they're gonna let me be on two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
One person in the Planning Commission and I want on that one.
Yeah, yeah, you prioritize.
Yeah.
Is the park committee done?
Yeah, yeah, thank you all, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
It might be helpful if they, if we, maybe they can come back to us with a little bit more color on that.
The issue is the timing.
Yeah.
They wanna start up, yeah, they wanna start up. And I have talked to Bruce about, you know, 'cause he asked me if I could be on the committee and I, I said, "What if, I've already made up a decision, I have a decision to pay the city hall, is that fair?" And he explained that you're not, you're not making a decision about whether or not we have it, it's just that the process was followed correctly.
Yeah, well, that's what turned me off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're at the tail end, "Oh, we need somebody to stamp and approve this," screw that.
Well, that's why someone should be on that committee, like one of you guys.
Do you have any interest in it?
I think it should be someone local, I'm not down there enough, I think it's gonna be pretty important someone local does it.
Well...
I'm not gonna be on it.
Well, what about you, Dell?
I didn't wanna be on it, but...
Well, I'll, I will do it, but I'm gonna make...
I think it's okay.
...things sure that they know how I feel, about the fact that they never...
Well, I think that's, that's what they want, yeah, I mean, that's my understanding.
You know, that's not what people are feeling, though. People are feeling, I mean, seriously, I've heard this from a lot of people, they're feeling quite a bit of resentment about the fact that this seems like a done deal and they just want, you know, someone from, oh, yeah, I guess we better have the citizens have this little committee and, and I don't, that's why we need somebody on, from, from, the Planning Commission's gonna speak up about that, 'cause it is not the way it should work.
Barb is too quiet for that.
No, she's not.
She won't speak up, we have Barb.
Not far by a note.
Tell them their plans aren't gonna get through Planning Commission.
No, this is like a huge taxpayer expense.
Yes, it is. Although, although I want everyone, if you get a chance, okay, if you think that fifteen million's a lot of money, go to the Wood River, I just can't, you know, I did my move across the country, my second, and we stopped in and I, we worked in Sun Valley area. They raised sixteen million for their new animal shelter, animal shelter.
Well, that's worth it.
But, but here's their debate.
This is in Sun Valley.
Well, no, Wood River Valley, so, you know, which is all Blaine County. But the, the, the thing that's controversial there is it was between a senior citizen facility there or the animal shelter, and the animal shelter won out, so you're always gonna make someone unhappy, I'm telling you.
By the way, the, this section here about who's gonna be on, what people are gonna be on, what positions they're gonna be on, the committee, and, and you added citizen, one, one citizen.
Yeah.
I would like it to say one resident.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you, it's one of the red texts, though, right, I just inserted. Yeah, here you go.
Do, does it need to be further?
Resident of Cana Beach.
Do we wanna get that?
Well, full-time is, if you're gonna be on any of these committees, you have to be at full-time, I think we should follow that.
Yeah, okay.
And you know, to function in that row, they have, I would think they have to be, you know, 'cause they're, they're gonna be...
We're supposed to leave these here.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, I'll pick them up. All right, thank you all.
I put mine in my pocket memory.
How's summer going there?
Had a great summer, yeah.
That's right.